Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for participating in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID-19 in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtually public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis, alternatives, impact, and mitigation measures that are presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Project Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. In addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during the meeting and provided any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comments today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on the screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon is to listen and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Final Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Impact Statement. Before we get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez. We have Mark McGlaughton, Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McCall, our NEPA assignment manager. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tony Tanoco, our moderator for this virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. Today, I will be serving as the moderator and will go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on Interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you would like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and searching for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state their first and last name, and if applicable, the organization they are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been extended, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comments. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to use them. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, you may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comment. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally, ask you to spell an unusual word, or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is actively recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website by email or mail directly to the court reporter website at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we'll take a 10-minute break. I will announce the break time and start the show. At this time, I'd like to give any elected officials that are on the line the opportunity to write their comments first. Okay. So I will go to the phone and we have the first commenter, Arthur Sohikian, if you could spell out your first and last name and then give the organization that you are with. Arthur, can you hear us?
Hold on, I got it. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Arthur Sohikian. It's A-R-T-H-U-R, Sohikian, S-O-H-I-K-I-A-N. And I am the Executive Director of the North Los Angeles County Transportation Coalition Joint Powers Authority, NCTC. And that was a mouthful, but thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to give comments today. On behalf of the North Los Angeles County Transportation Coalition, JPA, I speak in support of the Bakersfield to Palmdale section of the California High Speed Rail project. The NCTC JPA, representing Los Angeles County's 5th District, North Los Angeles County Region, the cities of Palmdale, City of Lancaster, and the city of Santa Clarita, voted their unanimous support for this section at their July 22, 2019 Board of Governors meeting. And we appreciate the working relationship we have had with California High Speed Rail staff, including Ms. Gomez, who's here on the panel today. The NCTC supports alternative two with the Caesar Chavez National Monument Design Options as depicted in the draft project Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Impact Statement, referred to as the DEIR, DEI, DEIR, DEIS. With the release of the DEIR, Bakersfield to Palmdale section on February 28, 2020, the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale, as well as Los Angeles County Public Works and Regional Planning Departments, have additional detailed comments and/or mitigation requests. The NCTC JPA strongly urges the High Speed Rail Authority staff carefully consider Lancaster, Palmdale, and LA County Public Work and Regional Planning comments and mitigation requests as you prepare the final Bakersfield to Palmdale section EIR, EIS. In closing, CALSTA, the State Transportation Agency, announced this week the Transit and Inner City Capital Program, TIRC P, grant of $107 million grant award to the Metro-Metrolink Antelope Valley Line Capital and Service Improvements Project. The NCTC Board has allocated over $116 million, roughly 53% of the total $220 million AVL Improvement Project costs. As a funding partner, the NCTC has been working with Metro, Metrolink, and CALSTA on the projects included in the Lancaster Terminal Improvements at the Lancaster Metrolink Station. The NCTC strongly urges California High Speed Rail Authority staff collaborate with Metro and Metrolink on the Lancaster Metrolink Station Terminal Improvements to avoid duplicative efforts and potential expensive delays. We look forward to working with you and your staff throughout the environmental clearance process to make high-speed rail a reality for North Los Angeles County. And then my contact information is provided and I'll also provide these comments in writing. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Arthur. I'd like to remind those who would like to submit a comment today to please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And if you have already provided a comment, to please end your session on Zoom, you can also watch our public hearing on our YouTube channel as well. So next, I'll be going to Eileen Anderson. If you can spell out your first and last name and provide your organization.
Good afternoon. Eileen Anderson. Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. And I am here representing the Center for Biological Diversity. Today, I would like to request a further extension on the comment period for at least a month after this public meeting. The reasons for this are is that it appears that the document is over 15,000 pages long. And also, it is a document that tears to the programmatic EIR, EIS, done for the whole High Speed Rail. So we just believe that in order to actually provide comments that are useful, we need to be able to understand how the programmatic document interacts with this document. And in addition, I have requested documents such as the Biological and Aquatic Resources Technical Report and the Noise and Vibration Technical Report via email and have not received a response to date. We believe that actually those types of reports should be available online, but we're unable to find them, hence requesting them with no responses. The impact analysis also is not transparent and how the decisions or the findings were made, hence the request for additional documentation. And at this point, we disagree with the finding of no significant impact with mitigation for the Biological Resources Section. We don't believe that it's supported in the EIR, at least with the information that we have. We will be submitting detailed comments to support our position on this. We also think that the alternatives are not comprehensive in the respect that there was no alternative analyzed on a tunnel-only alternative through the Critical Wildlife Connectivity Area as identified by California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There are numerous other issues where we think that the EIR, EIS does not meet CEQA, NEPA requirements and will be submitting detailed written comments on those. Obviously, with more time, we'll be able to provide more useful comments. So in summation, at this time, we request additional time to submit useful comments at least 30 days after today. We're very worried about the legal adequacy of the DEIR, EIS at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll now go to the mayor of City of Palmdale, Steve Hofbauer. If you could spell out your first and last name and then give your organization.
Thank you. It's Steve, common spelling, Hofbauer, H-O-F as in Frank, B as in boy, A-U-E-R. I'm the mayor of the City of Palmdale, California. Is that coming through okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I would just like to make a couple of comments supportive of what Mr. Sohikian had said. You know, the North County is in unanimous support of this stretch of the High Speed Rail. The City of Palmdale has long been supportive of High Speed Rail. We are well-invested and prepared for the arrival of a High Speed Rail in our community here. You know, we've been working with Virgin Trains USA for that eventual connection along with Metro, Metrolink, and SCAG to make this all come together. So we have a station area plan that is going to be done later this summer, early fall. And that station plan is designed to take all comers so that we can have a basically relatively seamless transition. If you show up on Metrolink and need to get on the High Speed Rail, you walk across the platform. If you want to get on the Virgin Trains, you walk to another platform. It's all going to be relatively seamless and we're working with the technology. And I was actually quite impressed when the CEO of High Speed Rail spoke to looking at the technology and the systems that places like Virgin Trains, their successful methods and technology they've been using. So we're not reinventing the wheel here. So nevertheless, I'll cut it short and we have Mike Behan is our Deputy City Manager. He can provide some more technical details, but I just wanted to get in and let you know that we're here and we're in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind those who are online, if you would like to submit a comment, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. The mayor's comment was our last online comment right now. I'll go to the phones next. You should hear a prompt that you're unmuted. That should cue you to give your comment. So we'll go to our first caller. Please provide your spelling of your first and last name and your organization.
This is Adam Livingston, Director of Planning and Policy with Sequoia Riverlands Trust. And I just want to support the previous comment asking for an extension of the comment period. And that's all I have to add for now.
Thank you. I'll go to our second caller. You should hear an unmute prompt. Please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with. Okay. I'll go to our third caller. You should hear yourself unmute. Please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with and provide your comment. Okay. I will go to our third caller. If you hear yourself unmute, please spell out the first and last name and organization you're with and provide your comment.
Good afternoon.
We heard you talking. Can you hear us? Okay. We'll go to our next caller. Please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with. Okay. That is all for all of our commenters right now. Again, if you'd like to submit a comment and you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you'd like to join us via phone, please use the phone number on the screen or on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. Until we get another commenter, we will be here until we announce that commenter.
Reaching out to telephone now. This is Mike Behan. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike, we can hear you now.
Fantastic. Michael Behan, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, Behan, B-E-H-E-N. I'm the Deputy City Manager for the City of Palmdale. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I know this technology is super challenging, so I appreciate you guys using the technology to get us to provide input. I'd like to start off by congratulating the authority on the release of the environmental document, the Bakersfield to Palmdale document. It shows that we're making progress. The City of Palmdale is a station city and our station will be a connection point for the California High Speed Rail Authority Project Virgin Trains USA, Metrolink, Amtrak, Greyhound, and Antelope Valley Transit Authority and other modes of transportation. As a general comment, the City of Palmdale would like to request that the final EIR document be consistent with our city's goals for future development. In particular, we're looking at the street and grade separation designs and we will provide additional details in our comment letter that will be forwarded to the authority. In closing, we'd like to say that High Speed Rail is a much-needed transportation option in the state and in this region. We are looking forward to working together to develop the best possible project. In particular, we'd like to mention that we appreciate the good working relationship with Rick Simon and Diana Gomez. There is a good exchange of information and we're appreciative of that. And like our mayor said, Mayor Steve Hofbauer, we support the California High Speed Rail and have for many years and we encourage the authority, the board, and all the workers who are making this project happen, stay the course. We believe that this is truly a transformational project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go back to our phone list. If you do hear the prompt that you're unmuted, that means that's your cue to submit your comment. To our next caller, if you can spell out your first and last name and provide the organization that you're with. Okay. Our next caller. Once you hear yourself unmute, please spell out your first and last name and provide the organization you're with.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. The next caller. Once you hear the unmute prompt, please spell out your first and last name and provide your comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Troy Hightower. I'll try and be brief in my comments. First of all, I'm a longtime supporter of High Speed Rail project. I'm an independent transportation consultant based in Bakersfield. What's come to my attention when I began reviewing the Bakersfield-Palmdale draft, EIR, is that I noticed that there's a gap between where the LGA was approved to the F Street Station but did not continue the five miles to Oswald Street, which is the beginning of the Bakersfield-Palmdale segment. So I have more of a question on how would people from Bakersfield get to Palmdale if there's no approved section between F Street and LGA, I mean, and Oswald Street? I do understand that the original hybrid Fresno-Bakersfield segment that was approved does go to Oswald Street. And then, at the same time, I have the question, how would people from Palmdale get to Bakersfield and beyond? So these are questions that have come up and this is just recently. And I downloaded a map from the High Speed Rail station called Approved Project Local Generated Alternative and it does show the LGA approved to the F Street Station, 34th and L Street, but it does not continue to Oswald. And so I believe this could be a significant concern as a gap as well as my understanding is that the Bakersfield-Palmdale segment begins at Oswald Street. In addition, and I'll close with this, I reviewed the supplemental record of decision from the FRA on the LGA and they mentioned here that the approval stops at the intersection of 34th Street and Oswald and L Street, excuse me. And then following environmental evaluation of Bakersfield-Palmdale, they anticipate future review, if at all, of that gap between F Street and Oswald Street. So I know that this may be technically outside of the boundary of the Bakersfield-Palmdale segment, but I think operationally and even going back to that independent utility, that a section must go from one station to another. I'm not sure how that would work at this point. So I'm just bringing that just to your attention. It's something I'm still looking into. But I think it is a matter that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our next caller. Please spell out the first and last name and the organization you're with. Okay. We'll go to our next caller. Please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with. Can you hear it? Nope. Okay, we'll go to our last caller on the phone list. Please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with. Nope, okay. As a reminder, if you would like to just watch the public hearing and listen in to the comments, you can go to our YouTube channel. That's so that you can just view the public hearing from that channel. If you'd like to submit a comment today, please participate with us online. You can see the link on your screen or you can call in using the phone number on the screen. And there's a webinar ID as well. This information's on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. Okay, we have one person on the phone. Once you hear the unmute prompt, that is your cue that you are ready to give your comment. If you can spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Susan Greenfield. I'm representing myself. I am calling in about Section 35 Electromagnetic Interference and Electromagnetic Fields. And in the summary of the report section, the report states "Population and facilities close to the high-speed rail could experience effects from exposure to EMI and EMF, including medical laboratories, research, technology parks, dense housing developments, schools and colleges, electric power lines." The report does not indicate the effects, the impact, or what "close" means. Can you add some clarity to this?
So for today's hearing, we are only receiving comments. Our panelists are not able to provide any answers to questions today, but we will take your comment and include that in our final environmental document.
Okay, so I guess let me help you with the comment. I don't know if you're recording this or writing it down. My comment is, the report does not describe the amount of EMI/EMF that would be generated, nor the recommended distance. The report does not indicate, in my reading, any effort made to reduce the EMI and EMF impacts. I didn't see that in the report. And the report implies, or I infer, that all existing facilities that are close will, at their own cost, construct materials to prevent the wavelengths from penetrating the facilities. And I'm specifically referring to the medical facilities, the educational facilities, the health facilities. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'd like to remind those of you who are online, if you'd like to submit a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. So that flags us that you're wanting to provide a comment. For those who'd like to call in, please look for the prompt that you're unmuted to provide your comment. Okay, we are going to break momentarily. We'll return at 4 o'clock. Again, those who have joined online, if you'd like to submit a comment, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Again, today, our panelists are not answering questions or providing a presentation. The reason for our public hearing today is just to receive comments that we'll include in our final environmental document. So we will resume at 4 o'clock. Thank you. So we will resume at four o'clock. Thank you. Okay, we are resuming our public hearing for the Bakersfield to Palmdale section. We're going to go over a couple of instructions on how to comment and we'll begin with our Central Regional Director Diana Gomez. Diana, if you can unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and welcome you back and thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis, alternatives, impact and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Project Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. In addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during this hearing and provide any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comment today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale's Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon is to listen and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale the Final Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, we have Mark McGlaughlin, our Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McKell, our NEPA Assignment Manager. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Tony Tonoco, our moderator for this virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. So today I will be serving as the moderator and we'll go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you would like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and searching for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state their first and last name and if applicable, the organization they are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next caller to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website by email or mail directly to the authority website at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I'll announce the break time and start time at each hour. At this time, I'd like to give any elected officials that are on the line the opportunity to provide their comments. And again, if you are online, you can use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. That will let us know that you would like to provide a comment. If you are calling in over the phone and would like to provide a comment, I will unmute you. You should hear a prompt and that'll be your cue to provide your comment. If you would like to simply listen in, please let us know that you'd like to not provide a comment and we'll move on to the next caller. So we have someone on the phone. If you can spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with and provide your comment.
Tina McIntyre, T-I-N-A-M-C-I-N-T-Y-R-E. I'm with Cal Portland Company.
Thank you. If you could provide your comment?
Thank you. On behalf of Cal Portland Company, I'm here to convey our strong opposition to the preferred alternative in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Draft Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Impact Statement. In 2018, our council submitted an official letter to Chairman Richards and the board outlining our official position on this matter and will do so again during the current public review period. The preferred alternative crosses through current and future mining operations on Cal Portland's land. Our detailed review of the preferred alternative determined that it will result in severe financial, safety and environmental impacts and fails to comply with CEQA and NEPA. Cal Portland is one of the largest businesses in the local community. The Mojave Cement Plant and Quarries have been operating since 1955 and provides employment equivalent to 200 full-time employees and contractors. Under the preferred alternative alignment and necessary safety buffers, Cal Portland would suffer approximately 6.2 years of lost mine and cement plant life and gross revenue loss of $1.2 billion. The effects of this revenue loss would not only adversely impact Cal Portland, but also the workers at the plants and quarries, the Mojave community, downstream customers such as ready-mix concrete producers, building product manufacturers, in addition to Cal transpaving projects and any other consumers of cement who could be forced to pay higher prices in a less competitive cement market. The preferred alternative route is not feasible from the engineering and safety perspective. Cal Portland Mojave quarries are surface mines with active pits running approximately 1,000 feet below the surface. The preferred alternative calls for the constructions of portions of the route adjacent to current pits, roads, conveyor designs and through planned material stockpiles. The draft EIRE/ES states there will be an underground 220-foot exclusion zone around the B-to-P build alternative tunnel structures to provide a buffer from drilling and blasting excavation activities. But this is still not a sufficient safety buffer zone. Cal Portland recommends a minimum underground blast buffer of 640 feet, not 220 feet. The 220-foot blasting exclusion zone is simply inadequate to protect the trains. Cal Portland recommends a 1,500-foot buffer zone between the surface rail line and quarries as fly rock and vibrations from mining blast areas can strike the rail tracks or trains, resulting in potential derailment and other significant hazards, including fatalities. High Speed Rail Authority has failed to include surface safety buffer zones in their analysis. We are aware of a fatality at a mine from blast fly rock that came through a pickup truck. We are aware of a fatality at a mine from blast fly rock that came through a pickup truck's roof parked 1,200 feet from the quarry blast zone. Cal Portland has met with High Speed Rail representatives on several occasions to discuss and illustrate our concerns, but the meetings have not resulted in any changes to the preferred alternative. We welcome the opportunity to work with High Speed Rail Authority to assist in avoiding the significant impacts of the preferred alternative in the draft EIRE/ES. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as a reminder, as soon as we get another commenter, we'll announce them. For now, this public hearing is just to receive comments. We will not be giving a presentation or answering questions.
Again, I'd like to remind those of you who are online, if you wish to provide a comment on today's public hearing, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. That will let us know that you're interested in providing a comment. If you're calling in through the phone, we will unmute your line. If you do not wish to provide a comment, simply say no comment and we'll move on to the next caller. So our next caller, if you can, please clearly spell out your first and last name and provide the organization you're with. Okay, Jennifer, you are next on our online list. If you can please spell out your first and last name and provide the organization you're with. Jennifer, can you hear us? Okay, we'll try you again later.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for participating in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID-19 in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis alternatives impacts and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale project section draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. This public state hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We do have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. And in addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during this hearing and provide any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comments today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen a detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also visit your website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale section draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon is to listen and to record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale final environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez. We have Mark McGlaughlin, Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McKell, our NEPA assignment manager. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Tony Tanook, our moderator, for this virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. Today I'll be serving as the moderator and we'll go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state their first and last name and if applicable, the organization they are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that again, you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website by email or mail by visiting our website www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I'll announce the break time and start time each hour. At this time, I'd like to give any elected officials that are on the line the opportunity to provide their comments first. And again, if you are online, if you'd like to provide a comment, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
We will now be going on a short 10-minute break and I will announce when we resume with our public hearing. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to thank and welcome you back and thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID-19 in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis, alternatives, impact, and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Project Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. And in addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during this hearing and provide any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comment today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can always visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and your job this afternoon, our job this afternoon is to listen and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Final Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. Before we get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, and then we have Mark McGlaughton, our Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McCall, our NEPA Assignment Manager. At this time, I would like to welcome back Tony Tanoco, our moderator for the virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and we'll go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on Interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name and if applicable, the organization they are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say "no comment" and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. This time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email, or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I will announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until 8:00 PM, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you'd like to comment today, please use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen and I will call in your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you. Okay, we will go to our phone list. Again, if you're calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you're now unmuted, so that is your cue to give your comment. But if you wish to not give a comment over the phone, simply say "no comment" and we'll move on to our next caller or commenter. So on the phone, if you can please spell out your first and last name and the organization you're with.
John Spalding, current Injun-Mono County Building and Construction Trace Council. Support the EIR.
Thank you. Thank you.
You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via screen. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon is to listen, listen to, and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield-Palm Dale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Environmental Impact Statement. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale final environmental analysis impact report and environmental impact statement. Before we get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, Mark McGlaughton, Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McCall, the NEPA assignment manager. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Tony Tanoco, our moderator, for this virtual hearing to outline the protocol. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and we'll go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name and if applicable, the organization you are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not be given the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I will announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until 8:00 PM today. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments only, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you would like to comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and I will call on your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez. I am the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for participating in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID-19 in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis alternatives impact and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale project section draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. In addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during this hearing and provide any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comments today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale section draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. We're here to listen to your comments, and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process, and our job this afternoon is to listen to and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale final environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. Before I get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director, Mark McGlaughlin, the Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McCall, the NIPA Assignments Manager. At this time, I'd like to inter- bring back Toni Tanoko, our moderator for this virtual hearing, to outline the protocols. Toni?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and will go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to comment and provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note that it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name, and if applicable, the organization you are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. This is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment, and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comment through our website, by email, or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a ten-minute break. I'll announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until eight PM. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments only, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you'd like to comment today, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen, and I will call on your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you. Okay, John, I see that you raised your hand. If you could again spell your first and last name and provide your comment.
John, J-O-H-N. Joyce, J-O-Y-C-E. Organization, Rosamond News, adjudicated Kern County Newspaper for this area. My comment is, I know many, many people locally who want to say something about the high-speed rail. But unless Diana notifies these people with a public notice in the published media, the people don't know to log on. They have no idea. I realize that COVID-19 has interrupted everybody's schedule, but Kern County publishes notices of public meetings ahead of time so that people can prepare for it. So I think in this case, there's been an overlooking of the normal way to notify the public of a desire for public input on an issue. And certainly, the adjudicated newspapers are well-known for Kern County. Their Kern County Recorder's Office has them all listed. And if the high-speed rail goes right through their territory, there should be a public notice put in those publications. Most of them are online or in print at least three weeks in advance so that the people that know about this project and have agonized and worried about this project can come online and tell you what their concerns are. I plan to let Senator Grove become aware of what's happened and also Congressman or Assemblyman Lackey. They need to send letters to your office making you aware of the proper procedure to issue public notices so that the people have a chance to give feedback. I appreciate the hard work that you people are doing on this. And I realize that COVID-19 has interrupted everybody, but I'm the only one making a comment. And I know that there are many people here that would like to make a comment, and I suggest that you do this again. Set it up and do a proper public notice. And I venture to say you will find a lot more response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis, alternatives, impact, and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Project Section Draft Environmental Impact Report. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments as part of the transcription for this public hearing. In addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during the hearing and provide any person with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comment today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also, we can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale Section Draft Environmental Impact Report and Statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon, this evening, is to listen to and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale Final Environmental Impact Report and Statement. Before we get started, I would like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director; Mark McGlaughlin, the Director of Environmental Services; and Dan McCall, the NEPA Assignment Manager. I'd like to, I'd like to take, give this back to Tony Tanoco, who will be our moderator for this virtual hearing, to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be serving as the moderator and will now go over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on Interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today, please use the Raise If you wish to give a comment today, please use the raise your hand feature found at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note, it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name and if applicable, the organization you're representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a 10-minute break. I'll announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until 8:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments only, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you'd like to comment today, please use the raise your hand feature found at the bottom of your screen and I will call on your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour for those who are just joining us. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to take a ten minute break and we'll resume at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director for the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd like to welcome and thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. Due to the complications caused by the novel coronavirus COVID-19 in California, the authority has changed the format of the public hearing from an in-person public hearing to a virtual public hearing. We appreciate your patience and understanding. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental analysis alternatives impacts and mitigation measures presented in the Bakersfield to Palmdale project section draft environmental impact report and statement. This public hearing is being held in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA and to response and to facilitate the goals of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. Your input is very important to us and will help us continue developing the California High Speed Rail project. We have a court reporter online to capture your oral comments. As part of the transcription for the public hearing, in addition, we have a Spanish translator who will provide simultaneous translation of the comments submitted during the hearing and provide any persons with assistance in submitting an oral comment. You can submit your comment today by joining this public hearing online or by calling in via phone. You should see on your screen detailed information on how to join online or join via phone. You can also visit our website for more information at www.hsr.ca.gov. Your comments will become part of the official record for the Bakersfield to Palmdale section draft environmental impact report and statement. We are here to listen to your comments and we will not respond to your comments during the public hearing. This is a formal environmental process and our job this afternoon is to listen and record your comments and testimony. Responses to your comments will be provided in the Bakersfield to Palmdale final environmental impact report and environmental impact statement. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce those representing the California High Speed Rail Authority on the panel. Myself, Diana Gomez, the Central Valley Regional Director, Mark McGlaughlin, Director of Environmental Services, and Dan McCall, the NEPA Assignment Manager. At this time, I want to introduce Tony Tanoco, our moderator for this virtual hearing to outline the protocols. Tony?
Thank you, Diana. I'll be going over the protocol for commenting and help facilitate the public oral comment session today. Those of you who would like to provide oral comments, please refer to the information on your screen to join online or via phone. You can also see this information on our website at www.hsr.ca.gov. For those online, if you'd like to listen to the hearing in English, please go to the bottom of your screen and click on interpretation. Select English to hear the comments in English and select Spanish to listen to the comments in Spanish. If you'd like to watch the public hearing and not provide comments today, you can do so by going to our YouTube channel and search for California High Speed Rail. The link is also provided on your screen. If you wish to give a comment today online, please use the raise your hand feature found at the bottom of your screen. Speakers will be called in alphabetical order by first name on the online or telephone list. Please note it is normal practice to allow agency and elected officials to be given an opportunity to speak first. When your name is called, we request each speaker to slowly and clearly state your first and last name and if applicable, the organization you are representing. If you are calling in on the phone, you will hear a prompt that you are now unmuted. That is your cue to give your comment. If you do not wish to give a comment over the phone, simply say no comment and we will move on to the next caller. Oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The countdown will begin after the speaker has provided their name and applicable organization they are representing. The time will be monitored by a timer. When the three minutes have been exceeded, we ask you to exit the online meeting or hang up the phone and allow the next speaker on call to give their comment. This is important to ensure that as many people as possible who want to comment have an opportunity to do so. If it appears that some people who want to comment may not get the opportunity because of the number of people desiring to submit a comment, we may limit speaker time to two minutes per speaker. We have a court reporter online to record your comments today. It is important that you slowly and clearly spell out your first and last name so the court reporter can accurately capture your remarks. The court reporter may interrupt you occasionally to ask you to spell an unusual word or ask you to repeat something. This ensures that your comment is accurately recorded. Remember, you can always submit your comments through our website, by email or by mail. Please visit our website for more details at www.hsr.ca.gov. At the end of each hour, we will take a ten minute break. I will announce the break time and start time each hour. This public hearing will continue until eight PM. The purpose of this hearing again is to receive comments only, so it is normal to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. Again, if you'd like to comment today online, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and I will call in your name. We may repeat these instructions from time to time throughout the hour and for those who are just joining us. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have someone online who'd like to give a comment. Gibbs Snow, if you can please spell out your first and last name and then provide the organization you're with.
Gibbs Snow with Snorthadonics. I just want to know after this hearing, what's the next step?
So this hearing is just to receive comments only. Our panelists will not be answering questions or giving a presentation. So these comments will go into our final document.
I see. And what's the next step after this hearing?
Like I mentioned, these comments that we receive, so this public hearing was from three to eight. We will take these comments and add them to our final document and publish that to the public.
So after it's published, then what happens?
If you would like, I can direct you to our website, www.hsr.ca.gov. And there's more information on our Bakersfield to Palmdale section on the process of our environmental process.
Okay. Then another question. There's already quite a bit of constructions that has gone on already down the Central Valley. Isn't that right?
So Mr. Snow, I'm not able to answer any questions. If you have a comment, please provide it and then we'll take that comment and add it to our document.
Okay. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, it is now 7:30. This public hearing will go until 8:00 p.m. And again, the purpose of this hearing is to receive comments only. So it is normal practice to hear silence as we wait for commenters to join online or by phone. If you are online or you'd like to join online, I'd like to remind you to use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and I'll call in your name. Again, this hearing goes until 8:00 p.m. Thank you. Okay, the time is now 7:50, 7:50 and we will end at 8 o'clock. Again, if you'd like to submit your comment online, please use the raise your hand feature found at the bottom of your screen. Again, we will go until 8 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have one public comment. Bob Santiago. If you can spell out your first and last name, the organization you're with, and provide your comment. Okay, it is now eight o'clock. That concludes our public hearing for the Bakersfield to Palmdale Drafted Environmental Impact Report and impact statement. Thank you again for participating online or on the phone. The hearing is officially closed. Thank you. Have a good night.